All right, welcome to the regular meeting of Guadalupe City Council, September ninth, six P M. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Costa Junior?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Viejas?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah.
And Mayor Julian?
Here, we have a quorum. Will you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation, condolences. Let's start with my left side.
I just want to mention that a long time resident of Guadalupe, Vera Rodriguez passed away last week. And many of you may have known her as a waitress and prior bartender at La Sempatía.
And just to add a little bit, she's one of the strong members of the Comité Civico Mexicano. So she's been doing that for decades. So condolences to her family. Thank you. Next item is agenda review. At this time, the city council wished to change the agenda format as we have it today. Good. All right, have we received this item number five? Have we received any correspondence via email before two o'clock today? Do we know?
I haven't received anything.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is item five. We have quite a few folks that would wish to address us. And the first individual is Mr. Deek Segovia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here this evening to represent Post three seventy-one, American Legion Post three seventy-one, of which I was elected commander as of March fourth this year. I recently was able to sign what we believe is to be the final paperwork of the lawsuit that was filed against the city back in twenty twenty-two. A lot of people don't know about it, and some people who do got the wrong information about it. But our members decided after March fourth, we took a vote and we wanted to end this lawsuit because it never had any basis in fact. So we did. And just last Monday, I met with the attorney that we had to hire in place of the attorney that thought he was representing us and signed the final paperwork. And thanks to Attorney Phil Cinco and Attorney Charles Gott, they got the paperwork together. And it was going to go up to Judge Bebe for final signing. And I'd just like to say that the lawsuit, it was frivolous, but the attorney that they hired, and I'm not mentioning names, but the attorney that was hired was pretty much on his own for his own. When we spoke, first spoke, he told me he wanted to sue the city of Guadalupe for twenty thousand dollars. And he said he had legal standing to do that. And I said, no, we don't, we don't want to do that. And he said to me, his words were, let's cut this baby in half. We'll drop our lawsuit, they drop their lawsuit, and we'll go after them for ten thousand dollars. And I said to him, what you don't understand is I am Guadalupe. My family, my grandparents, my parents, my uncles, my aunts, my cousins are all buried here. And I would never do that to the city of Guadalupe. And for those people who misunderstood and were spreading the false rumors, I mean, there's no hard feelings. People are people and they believe who they believed. But I'm here to tell you that there was never any truth to the city of Guadalupe being anti-veteran. The city has always, ever since I've known and been here alive, the city has always been pro-veteran. And for those of you that live here, I don't know if you've noticed the sign, the American Legion sign that sits in front of the Veterans Memorial Building. For some years, it's been in disrepair. And now Shirley Boyston's grandson, his name is Darren, he created the letters that were missing off that sign. And then he also created the letters of the new meeting days, which is on the second Saturday of the month at twelve o'clock. And Asidro de Leon painted it, so it looked really nice now. And I just want to make sure, you know, if you haven't seen it, take a look at it. Because if you saw it before in disrepair, disrepair, you're going to notice it. They did a really nice job with that. Other than that, I just want to say, thank you. Thank you to the city for sticking with us. And we are going to try to have a open house on a second Saturday of October. And I'd like to invite the community to come to the open house and just break some bread together. And let's get back together where we were before. Thank you.
Thank you. Deek, thank you for your leadership. And also, it should be known that the Post three seventy-one in the city has been working on the building to clean it up and to get it back to its original state. So thank you. The next individual had Deborah Sykes.
I live at three fifty-seven Tognazini Avenue. And I want to know what we can do about the loose dogs on the street. I thought animal control had been called about it, but I haven't heard anything and the dogs are still loose. There was one dog that bit a girl riding her bike. And the male postal carrier was bitten as well. The dog is at three twenty-two Tognazini Avenue. It's a male dark German shepherd. There's another lighter German shepherd that sometimes runs with that dog, but she's very submissive. What's happened as a result of this is we may lose our door-to-door mail service. And I would really like to see something done about this and so that the postal service can recognize that it is not needed for them to avoid our area. The option is if they don't stop doing postal service altogether is to put a box on one of the blocks. But we're really, you know, we're kind of spoiled. We've, we've had our door-to-door postal service for a long time, so I'd really like to see something done. I don't know exactly what the city can do, but we have called animal control or we've called the chief about calling animal control. And as far as I know, there was nothing done. But I saw the dog two days ago being aggressive with a man and his dog right in front of my house. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure the chief has heard that. And loose dogs have been, we see that on Facebook all the time. There are a lot of dogs running around, so whatever we can do. Okay, thank you. Next individual, Hasmin Moreno.
Hi. So, good evening. My name is Jasmine Moreno, and I live in Guadalupe's Pasadera neighborhood. We all want safer streets, especially for children near the school. How do we balance safety for students with the daily needs of residents? The recently installed bolted-in speed bumps are more than just unnecessarily jarring. While they may have been intended as a cost-efficient safety measure, their impact has been the opposite. We, the residents, are bearing the burden in paying the price through vehicle repairs, fuel, and wear and tear on our cars. Yes, the city may be saving money upfront, but families are carrying these costs every day. This doesn't feel like efficiency for us. Many residents must crawl over five to seven every single time we leave the neighborhood, often multiple times a day. We want to ensure this cumulative effect is being considered in city decisions. Others in our communities have raised an even more urgent concern. How do these objects impact emergency responders, especially when there is one truly accessible route in and out of the neighborhood? When every minute counts, forcing ambulances and fire trucks to crawl over multiple obstacles can put lives at risk. I also want to point out that these bumps go against established best practices. National guidelines recommend speed cushions, humps, or raised crosswalks for neighborhood streets. Short abrupt speed bumps are generally meant for parking lots. Using them on residential streets is not best practice. Lastly, the ninety thousand dollars Chevron Traffic Safety Grant. This is an opportunity to do better, but only if there is transparency in how these funds are allocated and if community voices are included before final decisions are made. So tonight, I respectfully ask the council to, one, remove the current bolted-in bumps. Two, use the Chevron grant for best-practice alternatives. Three, ensure transparency and include residents in the funding and decision-making process. We all want safe streets, but safety should not come at the expense of our livelihoods, our emergency responders, and our community's trust. We ask that these types of decisions are done with us, not to us. And as a side note, several residents, including my family members, did send emails to their appropriate correspondent before two P M. So there may have been a breakdown in communication somewhere. We want to make sure our concerns are being heard clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Derrick Ruiz. Next person on that item.
Good evening. I'm here today because of the excessive amount of raised speed bumps in the Pasadero Homes subdivision. I included a picture to show which type of bumps, and I believe you have a copy. They need to be removed because they increase the response time of emergency vehicles. We live at the end of Pasadero Homes in the subdivision. In June, before the speed bumps were placed, I called an ambulance to respond to an emergency call from my wife, which is sitting in the audience. The ambulance and paramedics responded quickly. If I were to call now, the response time would be increased, and my wife, my wife may not be here with me today. I spoke with the fire captain of the Guadalupe Fire Station. He informed me that a fire truck's response time will increase with the excessive speed bumps. The fire truck driver informed me that driving over raised speed bumps could result in a cracked axle, excuse me, a cracked engine or a broken axle. Cushioned speed bumps would allow emergency vehicles to cross over them, won't damage emergency vehicles, and will not be slowed down as much. I included a picture of a cushioned speed bumps. You should have a, you should have a picture of that. Cushioned speed bumps around the new school in the Pasadero Homes subdivision are the best alternative. A slow down for a children's cross, a sign, crossing guard, and crosswalks would be recommended to alert vehicles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual is Ms. Ruiz.
Good evening. Ooh, there's a button somewhere, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. I live in Pasadero Homes and moved in there about three years ago, and it was amazing. I thought it was wonderful. I come from a small community in the valley, agricultural also. To me, it was felt really like home. And up until, you know, a month ago or something, when I got up and all of a sudden, there's all these speed bumps. And they're not just speed bumps. These things are raised speed bumps, like they said. And from what I've been reading, these are the kind of speed bumps that normally go in parking lots, not in residential areas. I understand the concerns, having been an educator for the past twenty-six years before I retired, having worked in several school districts and worked with children and walked them across crosswalks. I have never, ever come across, I won't say a community, but where I live, where there's just so many excessive and the wrong kind that will impede not only me leaving and coming and damage to my car, not once, twice, maybe three times a day. They kind of, instead of going out in the evening for ice cream or something, I'm thinking like, do I want to go through all those speed bumps? There's about eighteen of them. I don't know if anybody's gone out there and counted them. I don't know if you did an environmental impact on that. You didn't ask us what the impact would be of having those kind of speed bumps. I don't know if you went and spoke with the fire department specifically and how this would impact their vehicles, their response time. I don't even, I mean, I even question or I'm concerned about Christmas. On Christmas Day, when the fire engine runs, you know, goes around every neighborhood and they're going to, you know, the kids look forward to it. They throw candies out. What are they going to do now? Then they have to face about eighteen speed bumps and the possibility of their fire engine, perhaps their engine cracking, or perhaps their axles, you know, breaking and all that. You didn't, it's not the same anymore. I am more stressed now than before. I do have health issues I have to think about. I, if something happens, like my husband said, and I have to go to the hospital again, I stutter to think on the response. What if the vehicle's coming and maybe the engine cracks before it even gets there? I don't know. You don't know. So I'm totally against it. And I know that had you spoken with the fire department, from what I've read, they would be against that kind of a speed bump also because it lengthens the response time and it causes, it could be a great cost to them by the damage that could be done to the fire trucks, to the ambulances. Another thing I like to say that a lot of people are trying to avoid all those by going through the other streets, and they're complaining about that too, along with even school buses, they try to avoid it. They go down the streets instead of going down those speed bumps. I don't know how many of you have been down there and driven all the way to where I live, which is the last street in Pasaderas. Going in and out every day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, sorry. Anyway, it does impact my quality of life, and I'm sure several people that are there also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual, Meredith Valenzuela.
Good afternoon, city council members and fellow residents. My name is Meredith, and I am a resident of Guadalupe who lives in the Pasadera community, the gateway to the speed bumps. But in all seriousness, I am here today to voice a concern shared by many, the excessive number and severity of speed bumps installed throughout the neighborhood. While I appreciate the intent behind the measures, which is enhancing school safety, I believe the current implementation has created unnecessary hardships for residents like me who live in Gerardo Drive. To exit our neighborhood in one direction, drivers must navigate no less than seven speed bumps. That's seven jolts, seven slowdowns, and seven potential hazards for vehicles and passengers. These aren't gentle humps designed to moderate speeds. They're sharp and aggressive, and they force cars to nearly come to a stop even when traveling well below the posted limit. It's not just about vehicle damage. These bumps can be particularly harsh for the elderly, those with back conditions, or families with children in car seats. Consider a sick patient needing emergent medical care. In emergencies where every second counts, these bumps will cause delayed medical attention that can be fatal. I want to be clear. I fully support school safety. And apparently, if you do too, why haven't you installed speed bumps in Eleventh Street near Mary Byrne where fully loaded semi-trucks pass by all day long? Studies from organizations like the Institute of Transportation Engineers suggest that while speed bumps can reduce speeds by twenty to twenty-five percent, overuse leads to driver frustration, increased emissions from constant braking and accelerating, and even diversions of traffic to other streets, potentially shifting problems elsewhere. This is already happening in our neighborhood. And there is growing resentment among law-abiding citizens who feel punished for the actions of a few speeders. Since these speed bumps have been installed, I have not seen any police patrols come down to Gerardo. Is our own police avoiding these speed bumps too? Our neighbor, our neighborhood deserves safe streets, but not at the cost of daily discomfort and expense of those who live there. I urge the council to revisit the amount and the type of speed bumps installed. In closing, I personally invite you all to take a cruise to Gerardo Drive and imagine your residents undergoing that fourteen-speed bump round trip experience at least three times a day to go to work, the gym, pick up kids from school, and run our errands. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. That's the last paper I have. Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? Please come up.
Hello and good evening. My name is Richard Palchetti. I do live on Gerardo also. And with the addition of these speed bumps, my enjoyment of living in the neighborhood has gone down. I do have to go through the five or the seven speed bumps that Dale talked about. And I actually do get a headache when I'm done. I have a little scoliosis of the spine and it actually travels up to my neck and it hurts. And we're going, you know, about two miles an hour over the speed bump, about as slow as I can go over it. It also used to take about five minutes to exit the track from Gerardo, and now it takes eight. I know it doesn't sound like much, but it's a six-minute difference, round trip, just to go to the store or do an errand or something. So it's six more minutes to, to get through the track and back home. I'd like to go to speed limit. If it's twenty-five, I'll go twenty-five. If it's fifteen, I'll go fifteen. But I can't. I can only go two over those speed bumps. I'm worried about other people with disabilities. I have had a spine surgery before procedure, and I know it's very tender. And if anybody has to, who lives in a Passada area has to go to the hospital and come back for these procedures, it's probably going to hurt. I'd like to suggest it to be replaced with the asphalt speed bumps that can be designed for the speed that we're supposed to go. Or possibly even the speed reduction curbs that some cities have put in. They, they work very well, and it's a psychological effect that people see the street narrow and they go slower. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else on, in this area, is community participation, anything that's not on the agenda, you can, you can bring up, regardless of the, you know, the topic? So anybody else in the audience, in the five? And we hear you, and we have all the individuals that you need to have heard and to work on this, this concern. So thank you for your time. We'll go to item six, consent calendar. The following items are presented for the city council approval without discussion, a single agenda item. Is there a council member that wishes to push, pull an item for discussion? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
My motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Thank you. The next item is the management reports. Item seven, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and staff. Today at two o'clock, the bids were open for the Royal Theater, and I'm just, they're unaudited. I mean, they have to be examined and make sure that everything is right. But for now, preliminarily at least, the low bid was nine million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The second bid was nine million, seven hundred and eighty thousand. And then the third bid quote was ten million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then the fourth bid was ten million, six hundred and forty-three thousand. Now the engineer has to inspect all the unit prices and all the different items associated with this. But that's the descending order of low to top to the high end.
Is that your report, sir?
That is it.
Tom, would you like to add anything to that? Tom Bradbury? You don't have to, but if you would like to. Okay, get the specifics. Yeah, the engineer's going to go through the details there, so. Any questions of Todd? Okay, item eight, Director of Public Safety, Informationally, Chief Cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and our community members. I just spoke to some of the residents from the Pasadera community, and we're talking about putting together at least a community meeting so that I can hear firsthand what their concerns are and be able to bring something back and, and look at options that at least I can give to council. And I'll invite our Public Works Director to, at least so that they can be feel that they're being heard and why things happen and, and we can see, and so that way I can report back to council. If that is okay with council. Okay.
Good, yeah. She says good, so it's good.
Okay. And I'll speak to you concerning the dogs. We already had communications, but I need actual complaints. I've talked with the director of the animal control. Everyone knows who the dogs belong to. And so it's a, it's a regular basis, and I've talked to the post office about that also. Currently, our fire department, they responded as mutual aid. So we have two firefighters that are out in a wildland fire. And so I'm making sure that we're maintaining appropriate staffing levels. So our first priority is, is our city. So just acknowledge that they are out of town. This past week, we had a DUI checkpoint. My understanding is probably about the first one we've had in about ten years. Out of that, we had two hundred and seventy-six vehicles that came through the checkpoint, which was right at Flower and one sixty-six. We issued several citations for no driver's license and no seat belts. So, and we have, again, two hundred and seventy-five drivers that were screened, three vehicles that were towed because of expired registration. You would have think they would have known that before driving through the checkpoint. And we did approximately four administered of DUI testing. But we're very good. There were no DUI arrests, no drug arrest. And so, and one for driving on a suspended license. So it was very successful. It was a good working relationship with the Sheriff's Department. And the good part is we got to keep a lot of the equipment, so. We got stuff that we can keep for ourselves later on. And the only other item is we're prepared for the parade, which will be this coming Sunday. And so if you have family and you want them to come along, just let us know. The more, the merrier. So we're all gearing up, and we hope that we have a lot of participation. If there's any questions, please email, call me. If you're not sure of where, what time to meet, or whatever, we'd be more than glad to explain. With that,
Twelve noon, right?
Twelve noon, fifth and Guadalupe. Please be there. We kick off at twelve noon, eleven forty-five at the latest. With that, that's my report.
Thank you. I had two comments. One is regarding the dog issue. Several years ago, one of the, a neighborhood dog attacked our dog. And we knew where that neighbor dog was, and we called animal control, and they actually knocked on their door and basically did a, you know, a review of what was going on and why, and then don't let it happen again. So they're responsive. If, a lot of times, they want to get, have the dog on. A lot of times they want to get, have the dog on, you know, on site and things like that, but. Uh, they will respond once we get, get them going. And, and as far as the DUIs, just look at Facebook and they'll tell you where the DUIs are gonna be, so.
That was fun to, uh, watch that. And on a last point, because we have our community member here, um, and our city attorney, um. People are paying the, uh, almost two thousand dollar fine for the fireworks. So they're, they're coming in, so we'll, we'll at least make finance happy.
I had another quick, uh, comment. Um, I recently met with LVCHO, a Lompoc organization who recently received a grant. To promote, um, active, healthy living in Lompoc. Um, and it might be the safe rights to school route. Um, but it was really cool because it promotes and educates students to walk and bike via, uh, school. Uh, with it, they gave me like this cool vest. Um, and a lot of materials to help educate the community, um, which I just thought was really, uh, needed in some community like that. So. Just in case we do maybe see a grant like that, that would be, um, really amazing.
Thank you, definitely.
Anything else, comments? Alright, uh, item nine, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, uh, residents. Um, so this month, um. One of the things that we've done is we selected a contractor for the landscape maintenance in Pasadena. Uh, we're still working on some kinks. We might have had some problems with the bidding process, but we're trying to work that out and, uh, see if we can proceed. Um, the other thing, of course, is the speed bumps. Our intent with the speed bumps was kind of like a shock and awe. To make it safer for the pedestrians and the residents of that community, we acted the best way we could with. The materials that were available to us at short notice. In a perfect world, and if we would have been planning this three, six months out. Um, we could have had time to order things like speed humps. Things along that, that line, um. And at the time, we did not have funding for, uh, asphalt humps or anything, any kind of cushioning. To make the bumps less abrupt. Um, it was a quick. Reaction to poor planning. Um, in the long term. Um, like I've said in several email response that I've sent out. We are looking to pursue alternative measures. Because nobody in the community wants to have damage to their vehicle or, you know, not. Want to leave their community to go get ice cream at night or, you know, any of those things. Uh, we don't want that and that's not our intent. Um, we are increasing signage. Um, we have put up signage for bus and truck routes. Um, to direct them to stay on the outer streets. Um, we've talked to the school superintendent, uh, to talk to bus drivers. And as far as putting speed bumps in other places. Those things that I think Chief and I have already discussed to kind of slow traffic in other places. Um, but again, we want to plan it properly this time. And not be reactive. We want to be more proactive because we don't want to cause any harm. To anybody's vehicles or, um, any kind of traffic deviations. We want to just slow people down. That's our intent. And I'm sorry to Jasmine, I seen her email today. I didn't respond. She emailed me last week. I messed it with. The twenty other that I got, so, uh, I'm sorry for that. Um, everything else this month has been pretty, um, business as usual. Uh, we have a contractor working out at the water plant or wastewater plant to handle vacation coverage. And I met with Enterprise, who does a fleet management thing. Leasing versus buying saves, saves money on vehicle repurposing. Um, so that's something that we're gonna look into. Um, and then, uh, more stuff with the architect for City Hall. Trying to get some more, uh, Q and As with staff and see where things are going. Let's see, uh, we started doing the beautification stuff at the monuments on the east and west, uh, sides of town. I think the east side got finished today, maybe. Um, they were doing a little border at the top, uh, to kind of top that one off. And then they're still working the west side. See, uh, Amtrak is getting ready to start doing, um. Uh, what do you call it? The, uh, platform improvements over there at their station, probably around the same time that we start our renovation of the parking lot. And, uh, the landscaping area there. Um, one thing that's gonna be happening is the transit. The talk for having an alternate transit hub while during construction was kind of an issue. Uh, but what, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna bump it down north about. Twenty feet past the current Amtrak station and, um, put temporary bus shelters there. Uh, for the meantime, uh, just as a kind of a quick fix. Uh, the other thought was maybe the Veterans Memorial, uh, parking lot, but then that has nothing to do with the train. So we kind of want to keep. Cause the train's not gonna shut down, so, uh, just kind of keep things kind of in the same location. Um, there was a state, uh, waterline repair, um, over off of, uh. Benita School Road. Um, it's been graffiti and broken twice over the last month. Um, I still gotta take chief out there so we can see any kind of remediation factors or if there's anything we can actually do. Even though it's out of the city, it's still the city's waterline. Um, so we got it locked up tight right now. There's been some. Um, graffiti since the last time they went out there, but no vandal, or no mechanical vandalism. Let's see, um. At the wastewater plant, there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, like I said, the contractors out there, uh, we've been doing a lot of. Uh, fog pumping from the lift stations, which is like bad soils and greases. And it's just probably the time of year people are starting to cook more or something. Um, but generally we have to hit Pasadena a lot. This time has been kind of balanced out amongst everybody. And then we got a new hire out at the wastewater plant, um, hopefully soon. Um, we'll have him squared away. And then. Uh, that's all I got. Any questions?
Uh, thank you. Just some comments. One is that, uh, regarding what action we took. Uh, regarding, uh, the opening of the school, as David mentioned. And, uh, you could take your bulletproof vest off because of, uh, it was a tough one. And we had to make some decisions and quick decisions in terms of how do we prevent. Somebody from getting hurt. And like, like what was heard from the, you also received some. Uh, requests for more speed bumps.
Right.
Um, there's a lot of folks and I think you actually sat out there for a little while and so did our, some of the other staff. To watch the traffic and, uh, people drive fast over there. They, uh, they really do. And I've, uh, I was, I was following one car. As I was going to Santa Maria and, and lacking, didn't stop at the one and Highway one sixty-six, just. Toodle on through and did the same thing all the way through to the school. So there's, there's, and there was, it was a comment. Don't punish everybody for somebody's bad deed. We're not trying to do that. And, uh, the meeting that we had here several weeks before we took action with that is that we had the. The developer on, we had the, the engineer on board, we had the, uh, Caltrans on board, we had everybody on board. Talking about what we need to do, so. Uh, so, uh, we're doing what we can to, to make, make it safe for people and kids. And it's a. And as, as we've talked before, in, uh, twenty twenty-six, and that's when the, the actual work is gonna get done in terms of the. The, the, you know, the signal lights at the, at the railroad tracks, signal lights at Obispo Street. Another exit at, at Flower Street, uh, that didn't come up today, but, uh, that's. I know we're gonna meet soon to look at, uh, you know, the Flower Street exit, having two exits as opposed to just one. So, uh, you know, we're gonna do what we can to make it. There's, there's a happy medium there. We're, we're, uh, you know, trying to get those that. Speed slowed down and trying to get those that have perhaps injuries or. Or considerations of, of their vehicles to make sure that that doesn't happen or no, no ill will toward them. Uh, the other thing too, and I, and I wanted to mention this. Is that, uh, talking about, uh, city beautification, the, the staff, all the staff. Have been working, uh, uh, with volunteers. To beautify the city as, as, you know, we actually, the, the, through donations, we purchased. Uh, what, twelve, um, twelve and a half barrels. And, uh. Uh, Pan American Seed, which is a seed company over here. The actual city staff took those barrels, actually picked them up in Santa Maria for the beautification effort. Actually haul them back to, uh, Pan American and they are going to actually put soil in them and put. Plants in them and then help us distribute that into the downtown area. What we wanted to do is, is to beautify the downtown area. You'll see a couple of, of, uh, wine barrels, uh, half barrels out there with flowers in them. So that's. Through the, through the city efforts and voluntary efforts, so. Um, and we heard, we heard, we hear you out there in the public, uh, in terms of what's going on at, uh, at Pasadena, so. Any comments, comments, or? Right, um. Where are we? Item, uh, item ten. Uh, regular business, consider, consider dissolution of capital campaign committee and establishment of oversight committee. Uh, Mr. Senko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, at the. July twenty-second, uh, council meeting, there was a request. From some members of the, uh, the capital campaign committee, uh, and the, the board of the GCAC, the Guadalupe. Community Action, uh, Coalition. Uh, to establish an oversight campaign, uh, committee for the. Royal Theater project. And that would include the, the management of the project itself, as well as the, the capital campaign and. Other issues. It would be an advisory campaign for the city council and. I advised the council at that meeting that, that would essentially make it a Brown Act body, although there, I would, I would be willing to research to see if there was a way. To not have it be a Brown Act body. And for the members of the community, uh, and those, uh, that are listening, what that means is. A meeting like this where there's public comment, there's minutes, there's agendas, there's staffing requirements. Um, there's, there's a need to, there's a, there's a high maintenance, um, level of maintenance involved in. Uh, a Brown Act body as opposed to just a regular. Group that, that meets. So. I, the council, uh, did not act at the time and set me off to do the research. And, um, unfortunately, I quickly determined two things. One, that. Uh, there would be really no way to create the oversight committee as it was being proposed. Um, to be created, that it wouldn't be subject to the Brown Act. And secondly, I realized when I was doing that research that, uh, the capital campaign committee that had been essentially created by the. City council back in January and then the members appointed in February. Uh, was also a Brown Act body, which I failed to, uh, alert you. And I apologize for my error on that, um. And I don't want to make any excuses why I thought it might not be a Brown Act body. I should have. Uh, that being the case. Uh, staff met and discussed this conundrum. About what to do, um, and we decided that. We really don't want to support, uh, a Brown Act body because of the staffing requirements. And the fact that staff kind of feels that it's the oversight committee for this project. Uh, we understand the desire of the community to have an input, um, that, that council's ear. But, um, they can also speak at public meetings such as this. So staff decided that it, it did not want to support, um, the. Establishment of the capital campaign committee as a Brown Act body. Uh, and it didn't support the creation of an oversight committee as a Brown Act body. Um, I will say that, uh, even though the capital campaign committee was created and it was a Brown Act body, there were no violations as far as staff knows because. There were like fourteen members appointed and I don't think that, and, and council member Finesse can confirm this. I don't think there was a meeting with a quorum of the members. So there was no, oh, there was. Okay, I didn't know that. I apologize, um. I, if, uh. I, I thought that there hadn't been a, a meeting of the, the, the members. So I put that in the staff report, so that, that's incorrect. But anyway, um, there is an exception that staff would support. It's the, uh, there is an exception in the Brown Act for a committee that's composed of less than a quorum of. The body that creates it. In this case, the city council. City council could, uh, create two of its members to be on a temporary advisory committee. A classic example is when, uh, uh, city administrator, city attorney is being. Uh, a new one is being hired by a city council, they'll have a less than a quorum body serve on a committee. To screen the applications and make a recommendation and whatnot. It's a temporary advisory committee to the, the, the whole council. So that would work in this situation, in my opinion, because it wouldn't be a standing. Committee, the Brown, the Royal Theater project isn't going to last forever. So it wouldn't be an ongoing thing like a finance committee or, uh, something like that, wrecking parks. So that would not require any Brown Act. Level of staffing and, and staff believes it would be rather efficient to have, you know, two members of the council working directly with staff members involved. But of course, the council is the one that gets to decide this, not staff. Staff wanted to let you know what its opinion was on this and its recommendation, but it's up to the council to decide. Uh, what to do. Uh, I do recommend, uh, if, if not rescinding the creation of the capital campaign to. I guess reestablish it as a Brown Act body and then maybe reconsider appointment of a smaller number of members. If that's the will of the council. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Um, you just mentioned that. Part of the oversight committee's intention was so that the community could have more involvement. And you said come to the meetings and community, you know, involve, but I don't think that's the intention of the GCAC and the. Possibly former capital campaign committees by, by requesting oversight committee. I think it's to have more transparency. The information that we've been unable to get still, um, about the, you know, so I don't think it's about community participation. I think it's about. Hmm, lacking information and requesting a better way to get it. So, um, I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, that's a fair point, council member. And, and that kind of supports my, uh, the recommendation I made about. Um, a, a Brown Act exception, the, the two member, because then it would be that direct oversight, the, the, even more so than, than a. A Brown Act body that would be like an advisory committee. But again, that's just staff's opinion. And we're not the ones that make this decision, so. That was a fair point.
I have another question. Um, for the, the advisory committee that would include two council members and then they would have regular meetings with staff?
It would.
Is that the intention?
Cause it would be. Whatever. There, there wouldn't, there wouldn't have to be required meetings unless if, well. You lose the exception if the council sets a regular meeting schedule. So you don't want to do that. It would just be more informal. Um, you could, you could set a, 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 like a, a monthly meeting if there's, you know, uh, the committee could set that, not the council.
My opinion is that there needs to be a standardized meeting of people. And it, it sounds like it's gonna have to be, or in my opinion, what I think should happen is a Brown Act body, be it. Sounds like the best thing is for the capital campaign committee to be dissolved. Makes sense unless. Cause I feel like the oversight committee could, um. Still help with that, you know, uh, so, you know, it could be some of the same members and whatnot, but I do think what we are lacking is a regular. Um, transparent, meeting, discussion. Oversight of the project. So I'm just gonna throw that out there.
Right now, uh, who in, on staff is performing, uh, an oversight? Um, function or task?
Uh, my, I'm not so much oversight. I mean, I, I advise, I advise when there's a question, but I, I'm not, I don't, in fact, Todd does the oversight.
And, yeah. Are there, um, is it me whenever we need to meet or we meet once a quarter?
Yes.
It's more often than that. It's, it's, you know, depending on the issues and dependent basis. So, yeah, but it's often.
So if, if, um. We don't go with a Brown Act, uh, committee. And we look at, uh, one of the options of the two, two members of council, which I assume mayor appoints.
Um, I don't, the, the council would appoint.
The council, okay. So if that was the case, then these two individuals would be meeting with. City administrator, uh, finance director, city engineer as needed. That could be once a month, that could be once a quarter. Uh, and who, who determines the as needed?
Well, I was, uh, Councilmember Jaeger, so that was my point I made earlier. If the council sets the schedule, then that, the Brown Act exception kind of goes. Well, I was, uh, council member of Jaegus, I, that was my point I made earlier. If the council sets the schedule, then that, the Brown Act exception kind of goes away. Uh, so it's better if the, the committee just decides that frequency on its own.
And they can be by Zoom, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, staff would not mind a meeting once a month or even twice a month.
Okay, now unfortunately I'm confused now. Back to the two member situation, the advisory, the, excuse me, oversight, uh, meeting with staff, uh, as needed. So once a month, when, whenever. And all I'm saying is who determines the as needed? Or is that tie into a Brown Act situation?
I misunderstood your question. I believe the council member, I mean, the, the committee members could request, I mean, it would, there's no formality in that. That's the beauty of, of, of.
That's what I'm asking. That's.
Yeah, the, the, if the, if both members of the committee wanted to call a meeting, we would certainly set a meeting. If one wanted to set a meeting, we would set a meeting. I mean, we're here to work with the committee for sure. And we, staff would prefer to do it at that level because then it feels more like what we're doing already, which is more of a collaborative process of problem solving.
So when you use the term committee, you're talking about the potentially the two council members?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, again, staff has recommended that we don't create the oversight body that council member Finesse has said, suggested that she would support. But as I mentioned in the staff report, that is the council's decision. If the council believes that's appropriate, staff, of course, is going to honor that and will will, will staff it and do whatever. It just that we felt, staff felt that you need to know its opinion, but our opinion is not the controlling issue.
I would look at, uh, my opinion would be, uh, try the two member, uh, appointed by council and, uh, meet as needed with, with staff. If that, excuse, yeah, staff. If that proves not to be beneficial, um, if the transparency issue isn't there, um, it would be up to, I would say the two council members to determine that and maybe bring it back and, and look at a, a broader type of committee. But I think going with a full committee, the Brown Act and all that. And these are my comments the last time. Um, I think that's a bit much. And, but I, I, I still think that an oversight, um, body, if you will, um, is needed for the scope of this project.
I agree that, uh, some sort of body is needed. I'd also like to point out from the report uh, that the project is complex. It's the complexity of it and the scale and the visibility of the project. I still think that there has been a lack of transparency with information I've requested and the community and I still, I, I believe it's we're at the point where we need to have a regular meeting. So I will still, um, suggest that a regular meeting Brown Act body would be the best interest for the community. Um, I also think that if we have two members of the council meeting with staff, not regularly, but as needed, uh, it would still, um, utilize the same amount of resources, if not more, by pulling staff into those meetings. I mean, what if we ended up meeting once a week, you know, for two hours? I mean, there, you know, I think the resources piece that's written in the report. I, I think we could afford for this large project to have a temporary Brown Act body while the project's finished, because there's a lot to do. We have the capital campaign. We have the bids that just came in, but that are not for the full project. So we have to raise the money for the rest of the project. I mean, there's so much that I've learned just by asking very pointed questions, um, that I think we need more, more transparency. Um, I also would like to note two things that are, I feel like there's a couple of different things in this report that are somewhat unrelated, but kind of related. Um, but one of them is, we talked last time when Tom was here, uh, one of the last times Tom was here, um, that we thought that having an over, or maybe it was about the oversight committee, that that would tax him and add more to his job and their scope would change where he would be charging more hours and whatnot. But it does say in here that he would be taking over the capital campaign, which was never discussed in the January meeting.
If I may respond to that, uh, I looked, I looked at the, uh, the report that was issued and, and the minutes were unfortunately not on point. I did say in the report that there was no specific official action taken, but I did watch the, uh, the meeting before I prepared this report. And there was a consensus of council at the, like, the mayor, in his typical way, said, what's the pleasure of the council? And there was basically general consensus for staff's recommendation, but then, um, I, I had to remind the council it needed to take some action and the only action it took was to, uh, create the committee. So it didn't officially provide its support for having Tom Branberry as the capital campaign coordinator, but there was a consensus. So that's what I tried to communicate in the staff report. And because of that ambiguity, I did, that, you're right, there are a couple of things in here that we're trying to accomplish, trying to clean up. We don't, we'd like to know what the role of Mr. Branberry is as far as the council is concerned. We would like, you know, we would like to have one person who's basically in charge of it. And especially if there's going to be an oversight body, then it doesn't make sense to have a committee that's handling it. It makes sense to have one person who's accountable to, uh, an oversight body, uh, whatever the nature is.
Yes. So in this report, it does say that in that meeting in January that Tom was going to be in charge of the capital campaign committee and working with the committee. But that was never established because I was reading through some emails that, that was not, it's not the plan. I was reading through some emails between Tom and I where he, he didn't even seem to be very involved at all and just said, actually, don't use my name at all. So.
I, I didn't have access to those emails, obviously.
But that was based on the, what had happened. I mean, I remember because I said very clearly at that meeting, please do not make me the head of this. I do not want that. Um, that being said, back to what I was originally saying is, uh, Tom that wouldn't this be adding more to his plate, which is what the oversight committee we were thinking would do and now I, I'm just, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure that we're not adding something to his plate when that was the whole reason that the oversight committee was not wanted last time.
Um, if, if I remember correctly, um, the, uh, well. Maybe I haven't communicated some of the things that I've, in some private conversations I've had with Tom. I, I will share this, that when the long time ago, like over a year ago, staff had approached Tom about doing a capital campaign for the, the Royal Theater because he had done one with Los Amigos de Guadalupe for Leroy Park. And at that time, for whatever reason, and I won't, I assume they were personal reasons, he felt he didn't have the bandwidth to, to do that. That situation has changed. And I believe as a result of the, um, the capital campaign committee, in, 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 and I hope this doesn't offend anyone, but not functioning in the way that certainly staff had hoped that it would in terms of uh, being able to, to conduct the campaign. Staff believed that maybe it would be, would be better if one person was in charge of it, especially if there was like an oversight body that was kind of you know, advising the council on it. The capital campaign belongs to the council. And at one point I had actually recommended hiring, um, a consultant to, uh, um, conduct the campaign, but I believe the idea was, well, we don't want to hire someone, you know, outside the community. Uh, be better to bring, you know, have the community who knows what's needed here. And then that's kind of where the idea about the committee started.
Do you recall when you suggested that? Did you suggest that to council, council or staff?
Uh, I believe it was council and I can't remember. I didn't include it in this.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I, I could look and get that information. I do remember, um, making it and, and it was a public, uh, record, uh, request. I, I don't think it, it, it didn't go anywhere. The council didn't, uh, uh, go along with that.
Because I feel like I might have suggested that at one point too. I think we would have been on the same page there.
Costs associated and I, I, I think everybody that's here has the same goal and working on this. I just think for me, um, working with Tom, I think having a centralized voice is, is the, in the, in the capital campaign makes sense since I have witnessed him do the job with Leroy Park.
I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I like all the other groups and what they're involved with, but I think having one voice, uh, working with an oversight committee makes sense to me and somebody that's knowledgeable about the project.
I'm not opposed to having one voice. I'm not sure, um, he's the correct voice, but I'm open to that. I just don't know if we vote on that. Because I, I feel like it's very clearly said in here that that's what's happening. Um.
But I, that's just my view on.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, there's, this is multiple, you know, multifaceted as far as what we're talking about here. Um, so I just want to make sure, I, I feel like this could have been mul- multiple reports, uh, or multiple actions, because I feel like it's getting, you know, there's a lot going on. But that being said, I still support an oversight committee that is a Brown Act body.
Um, I believe the, uh, meeting, I'm going to double check this, but I think I have a draft staff report, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, where the proof hiring a consultant to create and conduct the capital campaign. So I'm going to check and see if it was on the agenda, but, uh, I, I, I did find a draft. At least I did write it. I don't know if it got on the agenda or not, but I did find a draft staff report. So. Okay. All right. Christina.
Um, I believe a, a committee would be great to kind of oversee this. We see that a lot of individuals have comments. Um, I think we're all on the same page that we want to get to that goal line. Um, but I just want to elevate council member Finesse's, uh, comment. Um, I think I've heard it repeatedly that she has several questions, um, not just at this meeting. Is there any way that Todd, you can meet with her and maybe get those, um, questions answered?
In, in terms of the finances? Yeah. I mean, I've got the interim in there and we can, we can get, sit down with that. So. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll schedule that. Okay.
Jean, anything? Anything?
Christina, when you say you, you agree that a committee should be, are you talking in terms of a two member or Brown Act committee?
The committee two members, just the two members? Is that correct? No, I guess I'm asking.
Yeah, what, yeah, there's, the term committee is used a variety of ways. Are you asking, are you saying you agree with a committee that would require the Brown Act or the committee that would have two council members dealing with staff?
I'm going to jump in. I, I, uh, agree with having that, that the committee that is lined, that on page two, we're talking about the tasks that they have before and reviewing the projects, ensuring alignment, advising the design, facilitating communication. And then the membership that's lined out there in terms of who should be on the committee. I think that it needs to be, we need to meet, uh, on a regular basis to where community can, can come in and start uh, voicing their, their opinions and what we're doing. So.
So a, a Brown Act body?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my, that's my, uh, um, my opinion. And then, and then that's advisory to the, you know, to the cities.
Um, anyone else?
Christina, you looking at the same thing or not? Okay.
Okay, so I, I've heard three. So, um, does the council want to, uh, I would recommend that the council take two actions. One, to essentially dissolve or rescind its previous actions concerning the creation of the capital campaign. And then the second to, uh, create an oversight body, uh, oversight committee. Um, I guess along the lines as described in the staff report. And I'm not sure, I mean, we should revert, review that real quickly.
My only, on, on that committee, my only uh, concern would be to one committee member with experience in construction or capital. Maybe not, maybe not so much in construction, but in capital projects. Because if you have somebody that's, that's overseeing a contractor and, and our in- engineer, that might prove a little bit of, uh, you know, there may be some rub there. But I, but I think that a committee member with experience in capital projects, um, as opposed to experiencing construction may or may not, uh, fit in here, but I'm willing to, let's go with what we got here and see if anybody can fit in.
It's going to have a, a project manager, construction manager, it's going to have city engineer, it's going to have the public works director. So I'm going to have a construction standpoint, I think you're okay.
I think David has. Yeah, I have a question. Uh, this committee is for clarification purposes, right? Not for actual project management?
Exactly.
Well, it's right. So, so the, the members need to, for knowledge of construction is kind of nil void.
Right.
It's their ability to get the information that they need for clarification for public knowledge. So, uh, yeah, they don't need any kind of knowledge. They just need to know how to get information that they require.
Right.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm looking at the list. It's awful specific about who can be on this committee. I, 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 I would encourage the council to get rid of any preconceived ideas about who can be on the committee and just ask for people to submit applications and then the council decide who meets, and you can use these suggested kind of categories as criteria that you may want to select people, but if we're going to insist on somebody from the Guadalupe Action Co- Community Action Coalition, then, you know, that's a specific body and, and maybe, maybe no one wants to do it. I don't know. So, okay. No, no, they, they, they're going for a five, I guess a five person. And the city liaison, a, a person I assume would, the non-voting would be sort of the.
Does it matter if the person's in, in, inside the city or outside the city?
I don't, I don't think it matters. I think.
I mean, in terms of, yeah.
Typically, well, typically, uh, council, I, you know, I don't know the answer. I think it, for advisory committees, it's okay if they're not
Right.
residents of the city, uh, like planning commissioner, Wrecking Parks Board, something like that. I don't know. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll let you know that when you appoint the members, if, if there's an issue about that. Um, I don't, I don't think there is, but I'm, I'm not going to trust my gut this time.
Okay, state your, uh, state your.
Okay, well, the second, um, part of the, the first mo- part of the motion, well, the two motions, uh, rescind the previous actions creating the, uh, capital campaign committee. Second, establish, uh, five member oversight committee, uh, temporary advisory, subject to the Brown Act. Um, and the members will be appointed by the council at a future meeting.
You say five. Where do you get five?
Because that was in the staff report.
There's, you got six there, so.
Well, one's a non-voting.
One non-voting. Okay. So why haven't put that in? You're correct.
Okay. Yeah, there'll have to be a city staff member, otherwise
Yeah.
who's going to, you know, we got to prepare agendas and all that stuff. So.
Okay. Okay, is that? Pardon?
The first part?
About the first part. Uh, the ca- capital campaign committee, it, it's just going to go away and it was we were not informed it was a Brown Act. So is there anything we need to do about anything or it just goes away?
Well, I, I think it's, like I said, what I thought there wasn't, there hadn't been a meeting with, uh, at least eight members.
Oh, eight? Oh, because of a quorum?
Yeah, you need a quorum to have a.
I think it was only six.
Okay, perfect. So, okay, so, so I, I wasn't wrong in the staff report. Yeah. Yeah, we had at least, I think, fourteen members because there were some people, I don't have an exact count because there were some people that were appointed that didn't submit applications. We had eleven at the meeting and then there were some people that were added on. So I think there, I think there was fourteen, but I don't know. So anyway, uh, if there was no meeting, then there's no harm, no foul. So it just goes away.
Okay, so we're looking, looking for a motion.
For, yeah, I would say two, two motions.
Repeat them. So we all clear as bill.
All right, I'm going to, uh, I would suggest that they recommend that the council, uh, move to rescind its prior actions uh, creating the capital campaign committee.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All ayes?
All right, the second motion would, that staff would recommend is to create a, the c- city council create a oversight committee that would serve as an advisory uh, body, the temporary jurisdiction over the, uh, Royal Theater project including the uh, project details like timelines, budgets, fundraising objections, um, facilitating communication with stakeholders and city staff. And I, I, other issues.
Like you've got written here, so.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, it's to clarify that the members would be appointed at a future meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
There's a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All ayes?
No.
No, one no.
Okay, thank you, uh, we will make it happen.
Okay. Future agenda items. Thank you, Phil, for, uh, oh, it's going through that process. Anybody have anything to add to future agenda items, staff?
Um, proclamation, National Voter Registration Day. Yay.
Easily thrilled. Oop, I'm on.
Already written. Okay, uh, next item is, uh, activity reports, commission, uh, council activity reports. Christina.
I'm going to try to get through my list. Um, I. I'm going to try to get through my list. I attended Hancock Honors this past weekend, really excited to support Allen Hancock College. I also attended a Bulldog game. I was really excited to see all the youth out there, out in Lompoc. Currently, there is an art exhibit at Allen Hancock College that I also visited by Ruben Espinoza and Aaron. And they have a dedicated board just to Guadalupe. The Small Town Big Heart was done by Ruben, so it's really nice that he included Guadalupe in that exhibit. Just a reminder, there's a Bulldog Gala at the end of the month. I believe they extended that ticket sale. I also seen that Judy has a Cosecha Farmer's Market fundraiser, Nov- September twenty first, ten to two o'clock. And then I just want to acknowledge the Supreme Court's recent ruling on immigration in LA. It has created a lot of fear and unknowns. A lot of community members have called me, whether they see a, a unmarked vehicle, a sheriff's. They're worried. They're worried for their family, their friends. And I believe it's important we just continue to stay informed and thoughtful as we move forward. Thank you.
Jean, any? Any?
I attended a United Way function last Tuesday and it had to do with literacy. I kind of was, had two hats on, a city council and also as friends of the Guadalupe Library. And it was a brief meeting, an oversight on talking about a program where they provide free books to infants, um, once they're born, up to the age of five, Marion Hospital here. And a program surrounding literacy and also teaching parenting for parent, and this is all by English and bilingual, English and bilingual, that's redundant, bilingual. And that's as much information, information as I, I got and I, chief, don't laugh. I am in touch with the CEO, Eddie Taylor, who was speaking at this and I wanted to get more information, but it was interesting. I had no idea that there was that program. And he said, you know, from birth, they're signed up for books to age five, which I thought was kind of cool.
Thank you. We had a, a food bank last, last Thursday. There was a hundred and seventy-three families. We had quite a few helpers and a lot of veggies, which is, which is good. Also sending wishes to, for good health to Harry, Harry Mastani. So, so he's, he's doing okay, but let's wish him the best of health. So. Ninety-nine, ninety-nine. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? All ayes. Thank you.